And then like I thought of this like music.
And that's I don't find my my electric.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our joint study session with our Covington Planning Commission. In compliance with state law, city councils, special and regular meetings are held in a hybrid format with in-person, telephonic, and virtual options for public viewing and participation. Calling this study session to order, and we'll do introductions, and we'll start with Joe.
Just mobile, City Council.
Christina Sulpus, City Council.
Jennifer Harger-Hallison, City Council.
Kathy Foster, Planning Commission.
Sean Smith, City Council.
Damon Katra, uh, Land Commission Chair.
Jeff Wagner, your Mayor.
Elizabeth Porter, City Council.
David Cottle, Planning Commission.
Debbie Hertzop, City Council.
Selena Lyons, Community Development Director.
Reagan Bulley, City Manager.
Krista Bates, City Clerk, Executive Assistant.
Great, thank you all for being here tonight. It's always a pleasure to get together with planning and going with what um. The last time we got together, we asked for an extra half hour because we like to get more in-depth um with our planning commission and I am going, we have one item on our agenda. And to discuss and review critical area ordinance, and I turning that over to you, Selena?
Yes, you are Mayor, thank you. Um, give me one second here while I pull up the presentation. While I do this, I just want to bring your attention to um Nell Lund, she is on the call with us today, she's with Facet. And was the leading biologist with their firm that helped us update our critical areas ordinance. Um, and as you know, Facet's done a lot of work with our Parks Department as well, so we're very familiar with them. And then I think Daphne Hernandez, she might be on there, she she's on kind of intermittent leave right now, so I don't know if she decided to join tonight. Um, but she may pop in as she has time, I don't know if you heard that she had her baby.
Oh.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, so she's. I'll pass it along, yeah. I I'm I'm really lost without her, to be honest. Yeah, I will, I'll pass it on. So tonight, we have a hefty, a hefty topic, the critical areas ordinance. I've got a slide deck here that I'm gonna run us through. Uh, my goal is to walk you systematically through the ordinance. Um, the areas where we had really lengthy discussion with the planning commission so that you can get brought up to speed on their thoughts. Um, and then also, if there's any need, obviously during the discussion, we can dive in to more detail. Um, so with that, Mayor, I guess I'd like to know what your thoughts are. Do we want to take questions as we go or at the end?
What's gonna be best since this is a very hefty topic? Do you want to go through it first and then take questions?
I'll kind of, maybe I'll pause each section. I think that might be the best. I was just thinking how long this is, so.
Yeah.
Um, so hopefully, this is an exciting overview of your scientific update on critical areas ordinance. So I'm gonna start first with the timeline. Um, we have really been working on this theoretically since we did the comprehensive plan. So when we do the comp plan, one of the requirements under state law is that you have to do a best available science document. That document was in your packet, that document is also adopted under the comp plan. And the reason that we have those best available science documents is to ensure that as cities move forward with their with any type of ordinance that has to touch natural areas, so your critical areas ordinance, your shorelines, that we're all grounded in the best available science. So we're all aligned at a state level on that science, and then we have a little bit of discretion, not a lot um of where we can vary based on our local um, our local landscape. So the best available science was ultimately adopted in twelve twenty-four, so with our comprehensive plan. Then we moved directly into the critical areas gap analysis. That's also in your packet tonight. Um, something that I really am trying to do more of, and I hope that it's helpful, is that we're trying to do gap analysis before we start to do any type of code update. It's really important, I think, for us to know where we are and where we need to go, and then focusing that effort on that gap particularly. Now, I understand in code and law, there's strings that come out of all of those corners. And so in order to stay focused, we focused on the gap analysis on the areas that we updated for the critical areas update. And if there was any other sections of code that were pretty easy to address, we addressed those. If there are other sections of code that maybe need to be addressed more, but are not reliant for us to get compliance, then that stuff is going on future work plans. So it's not directly necessary for us to get to compliance, but it'd be really good to kind of thread the needle all the way through and clean up the code. Because this is an unfunded mandate, the um, the consultant time is coming out of the general funds, we want to make sure we're using that time wisely to get us to compliance, then come back and clean up. So I would anticipate in twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven, you're gonna hear me say, oh, this is something we need to update as part of the critical areas ordinance, or we found that this needed to also be updated. So you'll see from the time we did the gap analysis um to the planning commission review, we worked on this for almost a year. Right? Sweet. Not, that wasn't every meeting over the year, but that was throughout those monthly meetings. So we got grounded in the gap analysis, we worked through the best available science. Staff provided various iterations of the actual red line code. And then we talked about the specifics that um that we had discretion on, the things that we could actually um make choices about. We held a public hearing last month, we're out for Commerce sixty-day review. Tonight's our council joint study session. We're hopeful we'll get those Commerce comments back um about mid-November. We'll work with Facet and the team to make any changes. Hopefully, we don't get any comments, nothing significant. And then we're gonna bring this back to the council in December. Best case, we may bring it back before Thanksgiving, assuming Commerce doesn't have any um, any comments. So we still have a little bit ahead of us, but we've made a lot of progress. So tonight, I'm gonna talk about these topics. We're gonna talk about the background, the purpose, um, why, why stream buffers are changing. That really is the biggest thing that's different in this critical area than we had previously. Um, we'll talk about just the code in general, and then associated codes and input and questions. So I'm just gonna dive into background and purpose. So first of all, what are critical areas? So critical areas are defined in the RCW. There are the five types that you see up there listed. We have wetlands, critical area aqua, critical aquifer recharge areas, frequently flooded areas, geological hazard areas, and fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas. That is where streams are included in. So they're included in that um priority habitat species, and streams are kind of lumped into that number five. Um, and then under the RCWs, the the requirement is that our codes must provide no net loss of function and values. Meaning, we can do things to a critical area, we can mitigate, we can offset, we can do a little bit of impact to them, but no matter what we do at the end of the day, there cannot be no net loss of function and value of that critical area. And so we get a little bit of local flexibility, but the science has to be defensible. Meaning, we have to be grounded in the best available science. And to do that, what most cities do is they follow the Department of Ecology guidance, the Fish and Wildlife guidance, and then the Commerce State guidance. If we wanted to go out on our own and do something completely different, then we have to hire the scientists, we have to do the study, and then we have to defend that in front of the state. So really, we're all kind of funneling as most of our codes from a state requirement down to a local. So why are we doing this? This is part of the Growth Management Act. The Growth Management Act actually requires that when cities update their comprehensive plan, so we just updated ours, subsequently, they have to update their critical areas ordinance. The two must be aligned. So technically, we should have created, we should have adopted our critical areas ordinance when we adopted our comprehensive plan. However, the state recognizes that's a hard thing to do, so they gave every city a twelve-month extension. So we're in that twelve-month extension. Um, and so, um, that's why we're doing this today. And again, because this is technically tied to GMA, this also leads to the compliance of our comprehensive plan, which, as we know, compliance of your comprehensive plan leads to your availability of grants and other state funding opportunities. So it's really important that we do the work. It's also just important that we are protecting our critical areas. I don't want to sound flippant in that we're just doing this as a checkmark or a checkbox, but it is really important. We've got a lot of critical areas in Covington. Um, local discretion is limited, and I'll walk us through in this presentation where those decision points were allowed. Otherwise, we basically met the state requirement, okay? And then what this means for Covington, um, this just means that our goal is to ensure that we're consistent. One of the big things we really took effort in was to modernize the code. So the last time we touched the critical areas ordinance was twenty twelve, and we did that as part of our twenty fifteen comprehensive plan update. There was a lot of theretoes and hereins and thereforewith and very long sentences that said very simple things. So we spent a lot of time on our end going through and trying to make that plain English. Uh, Mark, our attorney, has it now, so I'm sure he'll whittle off maybe a page or two, hopefully. But really, the goal is to make it legible, readable, and understandable. It's a lot of information. Um, you have eighty-five pages in front of you. I will say that we were able to take about fifteen pages off the original. So even at eighty-five, still a lot of information. And then also, we have to remember who uses the code. The code is used by staff in helping our citizens. It's used by our citizens in determining what they can and cannot do in those areas on their property. It's used by the industry, the builders, and then it's also used by our um consultants that support our critical area process. So this is just a little bit, and I've talked some about this. What defines the CIO update? Again, we talked about the new state guidance. Um, the department that's responsible for this is Ecology, Commerce, and Fish and Wildlife. They have put out a ton of handbooks, um, and a ton of guidance documents that um Facet and our team has sorted through to try to make sure that we are making sure that we're getting all the requirements in there. Some of the key updates that came out of the best available science were regarding the wetlands. So the Department of Ecology had several recommendations around buffer reduction, making sure that we're minimizing impacts. Um, and then the other thing we had in there was the Fish and Wildlife Habitat Conservation Areas, and this is really about the stream buffers, right? They wanted to see better protection around our streams. And then some other key related recommendations you'll see up there, um, we'll be walking through those in more detail. So why do we do the ba- the best available science and gap analysis? And I've kind of already talked about this. It's just really important for us to understand where we are today with our current code, and then where we are moving forward into the new code. And so we focused our efforts on updating in those areas. So we used all of these documents, and we found that we were actually pretty good in our existing code as far as alignment. So there was a couple of things around wetland buffers we had to talk about. Um, the way that we're managing critical areas and doing enforcement, we didn't have a lot of clarity, like who does what, when, what's expected during that timeframe. It was very vague. Um, we didn't have a lot of tools for supporting um folks that come in that want to use the critical area ordinance on how they can minimize impacts, or what are some some creative um me- mechanisms for that? How can we make sure that we're not taking un- unreasonable use of someone's property? Um, and then obviously, just consistent with the state model. That gives us a little bit of a sure- assurance. So what has changed? Uh, so since twenty twelve, there's no major changes needed to the aquifer recharge area, the geological hazard area, and the frequently flooded areas in our current code today. All we did in those sections was go and like reduce the language down as much as we could, because it was very wordy. Um, so those sections of our code are really great, that that those areas, we didn't have to change any um anything significant. Um, the other good thing is our wetland standards remain consistent with the twenty-two guided, the twenty-twenty-two guidance. So in in our critical areas, we have wetlands, and then wetlands have buffers, and they can range anywhere from, you know, a hundred feet to, I think it's like two hundred and fifty feet roughly. And that's all based on what's called a wetland rating system. So the biologists go out there, they fill out this form, and it gives you a calculation. At the end of the day, you get a number, right? Let's say you're twenty-five or thirty, that equates to a buffer width, okay? But it's also equated to the type of buffer you have. So if you come in and you say, oh, I think I have it, you know you have a type-three wetland buffer, I can say your setback's a hundred and fifteen feet, right? And so there's there's a little bit of work that has to be done when you do a wetland study, but it's also very finite for us to be able to help customers at the counter. So our existing approach completely aligns with ecology. We didn't spend a lot of time in that section of code other than rearranging and providing clarity. The bigger updates that were um here are those listed. So we'll talk about the mitigation sequencing, exemptions and modified review, um reasonable use exceptions and stream buffers. Okay, those are the areas that we really focused on. That also came out of the gap analysis. So I'm gonna pause there. Is any questions on why we're doing this? Purpose and background? Anything the commission wants to add? Okay. Very good.
But you did a good job, sorry.
Thank you. I'll keep going. This is a year's worth of work in ninety minutes. So I'm gonna just jump right into streams, because that is the main topic that we had with the planning commission, okay? Because under the current regulations, we were not compliant. So we knew we needed to bring streams into compliance, compliance. So just to get us grounded in, what are the stream classification systems, and what do we have in Covington? So there's four types of streams, okay? We have a shoreline of the state, we have type F, which are fish-bearing streams. Those are your big sues, your little sues, and your Jenkins Creek, right? And they kind of really divide the city into three parts, right? They really dissect us into thirds. Um, non-fish perennial, the NP streams, those are seasonal streams, they don't support, they don't support fish. We don't have any of those currently identified in Covington today, okay? Now, those could have existed at some point when we think about like um how King County did native growth protection easements, but today, as far as we know, documented, we don't have those that come up, and same with the NS, those are non-fish seasonal streams. A lot of those are actually what you're gonna see in those NPGEs, um, in those older neighborhoods we inherited upon incorporation. We don't do native growth protection easements anymore. Um, and so they're they're kind of a, we we know what neighborhoods have those. Um, I want to point out that this code does not touch shorelines. So shorelines is those stretches of Jenkins, Little Sues, and Big Sues, that is basically south of two seventy-second is the easiest way to think about it. So any portion of those three streams that are south of two seventy-second, that's all shoreline. So while we talk about Jenkins Creek, these codes apply to those sections, but the shoreline are gonna overlay that, right? And the shorelines have greater protections, okay? Um, and that that's not changing. That's that that exists today. So stream buffer is how it works. This is my little hand drawn. Um, thank you. Uh, my 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 word art of, just to give you a visual of how how this works in a built environment. So we have ultimately a stream, okay? And then that stream has a buffer, okay? That section, that that conglomerate of the stream and the buffer area generally gets put into a tract or a protected easement. There's a line that is drawn, okay? Then anything above that becomes buildable land or buildable property. So you'll see that black area now becomes the buildable area, and that's where the developers get to come in and divide the land, okay? But there's requirements for that stream buffer. Um, and so our, so when we're talking about the terminology, you have a stream, you have a stream buffer, then you have a building setback, right? That's our seven-and-a-half foot that we talked about during housing. And then you have the buildable area where you can actually put the home. So that's one image that shows um how this works. And those stream buffer areas that that tracked ultimately is recorded, or there's deeds put on it, they're very identified, so they become something that we can map and track over time. Oftentimes, they're dedicated to the city if they're part of a larger complex. If they're not um a critical area that provides a larger context of anything that we're doing as a city, it may be owned by the individual property owners um or the HOA. And this is just another look at that. So how this works, so um a project submitted for review, okay, so they come in with their plan. And as part of that initial application, they have to lay out, they have to have done a critical area study, they have to identify where all those critical areas are. They overlay their infrastructure on top of that. That includes their stormwater, their tree tracks, their critical areas, their lots, everything that's needed in a development, that comes to us for review. We then take that information, and that gets disseminated out to all of our subject matter experts that we have, right? So we have an expert in in critical areas that reviews it, we have a tree expert, we have a planning expert, we have an engineering expert, and and we look at this holistically together. And then what we'll do is we'll start to one, validate, did they in fact type these critical areas correctly? Right? Do we all agree this is the type of critical area it is? Do we all agree the buffer is correct? And then now we overlay the tree requirements and stormwater, because you get discounts depending where you put them. It's very complicated. Um, but ultimately, at the end of the day, you get a final development. So this kind of shows you the platted, and then those are the visuals of, you know, what it looks like today. Um, and then from there, once the project's constructed, developers or the industry are on the hook for the monitoring of that critical area for five years. That's a state law, five years. So they are bound to that for five years. They post a five-year bond. They have to submit a report every year to the city for review, and they have to be meeting their milestones. If they submit a report in year three, and their biologist says they're only meeting year-one requirements, they're on the hook until they reach year-five requirements. And we have those, we have those going on in the city today. We're working with them to try to get them closed out, but this seems to be the one area where developers kind of forget about it, because they tend to sell off a project to a home builder. And then the home builder says, oh, I didn't know I was responsible for the wetland, then we're going back to the original bondholder, which is generally whoever the initial developer was. Some cases, we're lucky when it's all the same people. When that project changes three to four times, it can be um a nightmare for us, but but we've got them, we track them in our in our permit system. And if we have, and so in that process, if we have any disputes, right? So if a developer comes out and says, I think this is an isolated wetland, I can fill it. And we say, no, it's a type-three wetland, you actually have a hundred and fifty-foot buffer. And we go back and forth, and there's no line to to agree on. Department of Ecology comes out, and they are the decider, and that recently happened to us. Um, so they come out and they facilitate that. Um, our alternative to that, if the developer still wanted to disagree, would be then we deny the project, it goes to a hearing. The hearing examiner would make their decision, depending on who prevails, and appeal would probably proceed over that. We haven't got that far. We've had one incident this last year where the developer and the city and the biologists weren't aligned, and then Ecology came out and was the tiebreaker. And they took Ecology's advice, and their project is going to a hearing next week, so that worked out for them.
But you had a question.
Oh.
Okay. Carry on.
Okay. So where do these stream buffer determinations come from, right? Where do we get the hundred foot or the hundred and fifteen foot or the hundred and twenty-five feet? Um, they're based on that best available science and that guidance from Ecology, always rolling back up to the state level on this. And WDFW has some basic recommendations. So for non-fish-bearing streams, those are the NS and the NP streams, a minimum of a hundred feet. For fish-bearing streams, they're looking at a hundred to a hundred and fifty feet, okay? Um, right now, we're at a hundred and fifteen, so we technically fall squarely in this area. However, the new guidance gives us two options for how we measure this. Um, this one, deciding how we want to measure us uh stream buffers, um, and the and the state gave us two options on that. So this is one area we where we have a a role and some discretion, okay? So we have discretion about which methodology we want to use, and we have discretion around what that buffer width should be, okay? Now, right now, at one fifteen, we technically could maintain that. Um, it's been kind of the expert guidance that that's gonna be a hard thing to defend, because the best available science from when we did it in twenty twelve has really changed into twenty um into twenty, um, what are we, twenty twenty-five? I was gonna say twenty twenty-two, I am sorry. Um, and so, so this is an area where we spend a lot of time with the planning commission. So I'm gonna walk, I'm gonna pause there, and then I'll walk you through the two buffer um measurements. Is there any questions at this point? Yeah.
Yeah, I thanks. Um, I noticed in the document, there was something to the effect of, one, you they pull a permit, it's good for five years under whatever that. All right, so I'm just gonna say this, right? Like, we know that year-to-year in this day and age, like, that seems like a really long time to keep the same guideline when we know temperatures are changing, trees. I mean, we've got culverts getting clogged, because all the other developments are all happening at the same time too, and none of these are isolated projects. What is, am I, if I'm I hearing you say that the state says that five years is okay?
Five years is okay.
Is it, do we have leni- do we have a way to make it tighter?
Um, I think, and I'll let Nell jump in there. Now, I don't know if you heard the question. Um, the question is about the wetland reports and how we've identified that they're valid for about five years. Um, so the concept around that is that, you know, you come in for a project, maybe that project doesn't get off the ground, and new developer buys it, they can use that same wetland report.
Right.
So one of the questions that our council members had was, is five years pretty standard? And are we concerned with just the relatively fast pace of change we're seeing um just in our general climate arena?
Um, sure, yeah, that's a good question. Um, I I've been doing this work for um almost twenty years, and it's been the the standard has been that the wetland reports are good for a five-year period for that that whole duration. Um, I haven't seen any recommendations to change that as as we sort of um, you know, track climate change projections and look at incorporating more resiliency into management strategies. Um, that five-year number is still held. Um, people are welcome to provide an update sooner than that. I think, you know, part of the intent of that five years is to provide a level of, you know, predictability and fairness to applicants so that they understand, you know, that how long the information is going to be reliable.
And I think a good example of that would be, um, we had a project off of two seventy-second where an initial developer did a wetland report. They sold the land with that wetland report, because it was still technically valid. So then that developer came in, was able to use that that information then to move their project forward. Um, it wasn't outdated, and we still review it, right? So if they admit something or something changed, we would say, well, we need some more information. But for the most part, that just allowed that predictability of that land purchase.
But I guess the question is, as a city, if we had decided that we wanted to shorten that time, do we have that latitude, like within a within reason? I mean, obviously, you know, you need to give them time to.
Can we reduce the?
Yeah, I think we can.
Year, like, or are we bound by state mandate to keep it at five years?
For the validity of the wetland.
Uh, correct, for the validity.
I don't think there's anything that keeps us from that. Now, can you think of anything?
No, just in general, as we look at sort of the the guidance and the best available science-based practices, um, you you can, you can meet or exceed those. So if you were to shorten that time period, I would view that as exceeding the current recommendation, so I don't see an issue with that.
I suspect some developers would see.
Well, of course they would. Rather just have free rein to do whatever they want, and we have to be mindful, yeah, and we're balancing that, yeah.
Debbie?
I think Sean had his hand up.
Okay.
Either, but I was following up on that. Um, appreciate that comment. I guess I don't understand. Maybe I got two questions. With the report, you said they have to, over those five years, continually report that they're meeting the five-year goals for it? And I guess what I'm hearing, I was thinking we'd extend it, saying, we want them to be reporting out for ten years, that this buffer actually is meeting those goals as opposed to shortening it, but if I understand you correctly, saying, well, what they're gonna get in five years actually may not be protective enough now.
Right, right.
So can we do both of those things? Tighten what they need to report on and extend the number of years they need to report, and then I have a second question.
So I think this is a really good clarification. There's actually two reports, and I probably should have made that clear. There's the initial report that comes in with your project that that types everything and outlines mitigation strategies if you're touching the critical area, and outlines your long-term monitoring. That's the initial report that I think that um that we're hearing over here. The second report is the actual mitigation and monitoring report. So that report then becomes the the guiding document for what the developers' actions have to be. So there's the, what is the critical area, and then how do you manage the critical area? We can definitely change the validity timeline, so if we want to change that to three or two or whatever, we can. The longer-range mitigation, that stays in place, because it's tied to the bond. It stays in place until the bond is executed. So I'm not as concerned about a five-year on that end, because the bond will drive the duration of time. Does that, does that help provide clarity?
I guess, I need to, I just wanted, so I get what you're saying, you know, on that, but how do we? I would like, so one of the things we're gonna talk about, and it's gonna get to, is amending these shoreline or these buffers in order to standardize and make it easier for development. But there's also, well, maybe we do that, and then we say, you're gonna be reporting for longer if you want to move your buffer in closer, or you're gonna have to. Or you're gonna have to meet these standards for longer. Um, just wanna think about that. And so I need to do some more noodling on it and if that's possible. And then two, one of the things I'm curious about is what is considered in the function of that area? Um, to just off the top of my head, you know, streams provide a whole host of things from in the trees in those areas from erosion control, you know, if your streams are not being developed straight up to the to the shore, temperature fluctuation or control on streams, flow rates. Um, so I just wonder wildlife habitat, um aquifer recharge. I know you mentioned that, but what all goes into no net loss of function? And I mean, do we, and one other, do we go out and ground truth these things? Do we actually go out and say, this is, you're showing this, but we want to make sure that tree's in that spot?
Yep. Yeah, the planners ground truth everything with our consultants. Our consultants come, we ground truth, and we ground truth throughout the entire construction process and then the post mitigation.
Are they also responsible for picking up any garbage?
Well, that's a construction issue and
Well, but what if it's non-construction? It's like people walked through there, even though they shouldn't be there and left Gatorade bottles.
Yeah, that should be part of their mitigation and monitoring. So when they go out there and do that. Now, that also gets into a compliance and a totally different enforcement discussion. Um, because technically, these, you know, they might be dedicated to the city at, you know, as part of that. So then that becomes our requirement as well as stewards of that space. Um, but that cost is borne by the developer.
Okay.
Until their time is up.
So what goes in that?
So going into the the functions of those stream buffers. So there's a lot that goes that goes into that. And I don't know, Nell, do you want to talk a little bit about what you look at as the professional on that? For the stream buffers? So when they're coming, okay, sorry.
No, no, you're you're good. Um, I guess, uh, thinking particularly about the code updates, um, these code updates include vegetative standards that um need to be met um, in order to to retain that smaller standard buffer. Um, so we would absolutely be, you know, looking at the composition um, of the vegetation that's there, um, you know, invasive species. Um, it needs to be low to meet those standards. So we would certainly document, um, you know, uh, estimate invasive plant cover and note what those species are. Um, we also look at things like, um, you know, the slope, uh, steeply sloped uh, buffers, um, just don't provide the same level of functions as um flatter buffer areas just because of the dynamics of of how the runoff is carried through those features. Uh, you just have less residence time for, um, you know, infiltration and um and treating of pollutants, capturing of sediment, that sort of thing. Um, yeah, so generally, we look at the composition, um, as well as, of course, the width. Um, we would look at, you know, existing developments, um, you know, that may maybe considered non-conforming and or, you know, a interrupted buffer feature that should be considered. Um, those are the types of things we look at.
And I think it's also, I think it's also too important that this is, you know, I like to think of like a hamburger, like it's got layers, right? So if you've got a project that has a stream, okay? And then you have a, and that in that stream, there's some erosion, right? Because that's a critical area, your geological hazards. And then let's say you're within the vicinity of a critical area aquifer recharge area, right? All of those buffers get overlaid and then you take the larger of that swath, right? And you're protecting each one of those. You're you're providing the protection to ensure the function of each one of those layers as well. So we have a couple incidences where you will have a stream adjacent to a wetland, particularly in the shoreline. I know that's not today. So stream, um, wetland, steep slope. Okay, we have, we have that at Lakeport, right? So now you're, now you're, you're looking at the function of all of that. And then how do you collectively look at that greater protection within that? And part of the process for like, how do we know is that because this is a very standard, right? So our consultants and the industry's consultants are all working and singing from the same sheet of music essentially because these regulations are by the state, right? There's the WDFW, the ecology, and then they're they're whittled down to the local level. I will tell you that our codes are not going to be that different from city to city with maybe the exception of buffer widths and how we choose to measure that. But everything else is fairly standardized now. Did that get at your heart of your question, Sean? Okay.
Debbie?
Thank you. Um, so I had read in the packet that tree height has a bearing on how how wide that buffer should be. So I'm a little lost on, I I know I read this earlier today, but on how we arrived at the one fifteen because it's it's the more generic, it'll fit more scenarios. But does that take into account the average tree height? I know there was an average tree height in Covington.
Yes, this is a great segue. Can I try to answer your question with the next couple slides? Okay, so and and I just want to clarify too that the one fifteen is what we have today. The commission's actually proposing to go to one twenty-five in the future. So today is one fifteen. Probably buried that headline and I apologize for that. Okay, so getting back to the question at hand, there's two ways that cities can determine or adopt the methodology for determining what type or your your stream setbacks, okay? And that is either through the riparian management zone. So this defines kind of a full area. This is a a standard number like we have today. So if you're a type F, you're a one fifteen. Plus, there's some things in the code too that could push that out. Again, like we talked about, if you have these other functions or these other ecological aspects that could bump that out. Or we can do site potential tree height, which is where you look at the heights of the trees and then determine um what that is. So I'm gonna walk you through each one of these. Um, so what the riparian management zone, so this is just kind of a really quick, easy picture of what that is. Um, so this is also, this is generally called the the RMZ. And you can see here, so you've got your critical area, that aquatic piece, and then you've got that that setback, we'll call the stream setback from there. Um, they have, they provide a lot of range of function within that, right? So the idea is that we're cooling for fish, that we're stabilizing stream banks, that we're filtering that runoff, that within that area, if the developer, you know, has to do mitigation, they're creating a better environment ultimately than what they found, right? I want to make it very clear that if a project comes in and does not touch the buffer, right? They're doing nothing. They're not asking for buffer averaging. They're not asking to adjust that. There's very little that they have to do to the existing buffer area. Okay, now a lot of them will do that because they want to they want their tree credit reduced, right? They want their tree number reduced. So they can do some work to reduce that tree preservation requirement. Um, and then there's some stormwater allowances as well. But that's because the concept is that you're creating a system where you've got maybe a wetland with a tree um, preservation area adjacent to it with like your stormwater integrated. So it becomes kind of like this the system, right? The symbiotic system for water, for water. And so within this um RMZ, so this becomes um, a little bit more of that static number. So these are measured from the ordinary high watermark. So generally where that average is that water is coming in and and Nell will jump in and correct me if I needed. Um, and they they do kind of use some of the science from WDFW around this, the um the site potential tree height um to come up with these numbers, right? So that number was really anywhere from a hundred to about a hundred and fifty was what ecology said is, you know, the science that they have. And so for us, how does that translate? Today, we currently do a static, right? We say a hundred and fifteen or hundred feet or whatever, based on the type of stream you have. And then that just defines how wide that buffer is to maintain that health. Um, but we have local discretion on that number, okay? And I'll walk you through the numbers that the planning commission looked at. Um, Nell, do you want to add anything around the RMZ zone that I may have missed for clarity?
Um, well, I, I apologize. I can't recall what you're covering in your next slide, but
On SPTH.
Yeah, so I mean, the two are really kind of, um, I don't think of them as separate. It's kind of just one management approach. I guess the biggest piece takeaway, I think for RMZs is that um WDFW is really uh wanting to make clear in the regulation of streams that just protecting the stream itself is not sufficient because stream functions really depend on all these um, you know, adjacent interactions in the in the hyperic zone or, you know, the 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 landscape directly adjacent on either side of the stream. Um, and so that's, that's what the riparian zone of management approach is based on. It's just protecting all of those functions more systematically.
Great, thanks now. So then the next um management option is the site potential tree height. And so I'm gonna do my best to describe how this works. Now, jump in if I if I misspeak. So how this ultimately works is that the fields, the scientists go out, they identify the dominant trees within the area of that riparian area. So if it's a western hemlock, a red alder, a douglas fir, they measure that tree height and age and then they plot that data, right? So then they get as this, um, the the data shows are. So those growth curves start to show like you see in the chart on the right. And then that starts to predict the height that the tree could reach in about two hundred years. Okay? So they go out and they do the scientific measurement. And WDFW does have a site potential tree height mapping tool that they've kind of really done a high-level view of this. And I can show you some of the information for Covington. This link is not working. Otherwise, I would pull it up today, but I can't access their database. Um, but anyways, they have a mapping system. And then from there, once that occurs, um, then the SPTH number, so that 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 height, that average height is then used to define what the buffer would be from the stream. So if you go out there and you say, well, the average height is a hundred and eighty-five feet in that span of of lifetime, then the buffer becomes a hundred and eighty-five feet. Okay? And so that, but that could also work in the inverse, right? We could have areas of the city where that tree potential height is maybe a hundred and ten feet. And then that buffer becomes a hundred and ten feet. Did I describe that right, Nell?
Um,
Somewhat.
Yeah, I think roughly. So, yeah, based on those field measurements, then you project out where that where that um dominant tree height would be after two hundred years of growth. Then it's really just it kind of, I think this is most understandable if you think about a tree like a keystone species, like it's the it's the orca whale of the riparian landscape, right? So the the tallest tree, you know, after two hundred years of growth that could fall and still reach the stream channel is really um what's being viewed as the width for full riparian function. Hope I said that well.
No, that was great. I liked your organology. Yeah. Um, so is there any questions around these two methodologies? We'll dive into the comparison here next, but wanted to make sure everyone kind of gets the gist of what what those are. Okay.
Does the S SPTH vary depending on the kind of tree then, right? Like, it is, right? Whatever's there at the time.
Yes. Did you want to, David, you look like you wanted to say something?
Becomes very complex and very difficult to ascertain the right SPTH for a stream. And so it's one that I would hesitate to use in the future. I mean, some group, some cities have done that, some areas have done that, but uh they're finding it takes a lot of time, money, and effort.
And I I would just back on that. I think that the science is, you know, like, it's it's great science. It's it's a it's a great way to do that, but it's not granular enough for a parcel-by-pixel evaluation of properties. So you know, e- each time someone comes in and says, what's my wetland buffer? I have to say, go hire a biologist, right? There isn't a lot of data that the staff has um to go determine that for them. And that might seem okay for developers with large pockets, but for folks that maybe want to just do an ADU in their backyard with a critical area or otherwise, that could be very um challenging. So one thing we did in all of this, so in comparing those two options, we created this amazing dashboard and I'm gonna do my best and hope this opens. So what TNs did, because we were going back and forth, first, what option should we use, right? And then the other thing was, what buffer width should we use? Okay? So we looked at a variety of different buffer widths. So we have one fifteen, which is current. We had one twenty-five, one thirty. We didn't spend a ton of time on one thirty because it wasn't much more than one twenty-five. We looked at a hundred and fifty feet and then we looked at the SPTH. You can go around and play in this on your own time if you'd like. This is an open source. It was open to the public um, and and everyone during our process. So I'm gonna do my best to like remember how TNs. So if we want it, I'm gonna zoom in here. Does that zoom it in? Oh, this didn't open. Let me stop sharing. Let me reshare. Was like, I see something you don't see. Okay. There we go. Okay, so this is the interactive, um, the interactive map. So what we can do, I'm gonna just kind of zoom in a little bit here. Does that is that following me at all, Mason? Okay, there we go. Um, so what we did is one of the things that the planning commission and and I don't know, um, Kenner, if you want to talk about this, because this was really your your request was what are we talking about when it comes to impact, right? So one thing that the planning commission is very mindful of is that we have growth requirements, right? And we have to balance that with protecting our natural environments. And so when we think about the buffers, um, and that that coalescing, that balance, what does that really mean for us at the end of the day? So we did some rough back of napkin stuff and then TNs and RIT built us this very amazing dashboard. Um, that really helps us dive into those numbers. So a couple of places I want you to look is down there at the impacted areas to whole property area. And then you'll see the calculation on the right. And I don't know, Mason, if you can close that window a little bit there, just while I do this. There we go. So we'll start with one fifteen buffer today. So if we look at those um intersected parcels and what intersected parcels means is, these are not fully encumbered parcels with wetlands. They have some impact to them. They could be fully encumbered or maybe that buffer touches a corner of their property, right? Because remember, buffers and wetlands don't care what your property line is. They go where they want to go, right? And so we use the word impacted or intersected parcels. So just based on the data that we have today, the the setbacks and what we know about these streams, there's about a hundred and eighteen parcels that are affected. Twenty-one of those are vacant parcels, so ripe for redevelopment. Um, total property areas within this hundred and eighteen parcels that are are intersected um, is the total property area, not just the, that that includes the non-encumbered areas, two hundred and seventy, but the encumbered area becomes sixty-seven acres, right? So of those hundred and eighteen parcels, sixty-seven acres becomes impacted. That's what we have today. Okay? No, it's the whole, the whole city. I just think the zoomed in kind of gives you some context for for how we look at this. When you look at the impacted area to whole property area percentages, this breaks it down by how much of that property is impacted, right? Is so in the hundred and fifteen, the average is about thirty of those parcels are about twenty percent impacted and about eleven parcels are eighty to a a hundred percent impacted. And why does that matter? Okay? This matters for a couple reasons why this data matters. At some point, you can have a parcel that is fully impacted and I would say in that probably sixty to a hundred percent by a critical area, that then they have to come in for what's called a reasonable use exception. And this is a methodology under state law that circumvents the takings clause, basically. So everyone's entitled to a use of their property, right? If we deny that use, that's a taking. The government has to compensate them. And so when you have a critical area with all these really stringent requirements that you have to abide by and you want, you want to build a home on it, where do you build your home? You probably have to build it in part of the critical area. So there's this methodology called a reasonable use exemption that says, we're gonna evaluate what square footage of your impacted area you can build in, okay? And so where we start to look at this from a planning perspective, kind of where I sit, is well, man, if we've got a lot of parcels in that sixty to a hundred percent, that's a lot of RUEs that we're doing year over year, right? So they're coming in, that's a process step that they have to take. So today, this is kind of what it looks like. If we jump over to, we'll jump over to 125 because that's the recommendation. You'll see these numbers don't change too terribly much, right? They're relatively the same. Not much, not much has changed there. Um, you still have a handful that are in that 60 to 100. Um, but most of them have a portion of their property impacted. We'll go ahead and jump down to 150. Um, the intersected parcels here. So that, that number changes a bit. That number goes up. Again, you can see them in the map summary down there. We kind of summarized them for you as well. They don't seem like that much of a jump, right, to go from 107 to 111 to 127. Um, but the total property areas also don't seem like that much. But what happens, and let me click here, you start to get a few more of those parcels where the properties are fully encumbered by a, by a buffer or a critical area. Okay, and we're going to talk a little bit more about this, but it's not just the development potential, but it's your redevelopment ability. It's your ability to put in a deck in your backyard has anything to do with what you want to do on your property. Once you're identified and you're in a buffer and you're in an existing neighborhood, even if it's been platted, you are still bound by this, these regulations. Okay? And I'll talk more about that in a little bit. Um, and then we'll just jump down to um, the SPTH. So the intersected parcels here, you'll see that number jumps. And then here, it creates about, you know, 40 of those process part parcels now are highly almost fully encumbered. So those would all most likely be coming in for a reasonable use exemption or being limited on what their availability is.
Is there a way to plot those on that map, figure out like?
Yeah, I, I can tell you, I think I know where most of them are. Um, you're going to get a lot of them up here off the Jenkins Creek reach, right? Up in here, um, and you're going to get most of them over here. Oh, I'm not moving much faster on my screen. I apologize. Um, you're going to see a lot of them along Seuss Creek on the western portion of the city. And you know, some of these are also, if I zoom out, you know, you've got um, some platted neighborhoods that are affected by this when you start to kind of see, you know, they're not purple because they're not vacant, but all of these properties in here um, start to get in, in, impacted. Does that make sense? Is there questions about that? Yeah.
So is there, is there a way to rate a particular about, for example, you mentioned, say, an ADU? If it's smaller in size or a deck, much less of an impact than putting a whole nother house on like a full house or tearing down a single story and doing a three or fourplex, right? There's different, is, is there a way to adjust? Um, anything in the code so that if somebody has a lower impact project, even if like, is that, or is that just what you use if we look for reasonable?
Yeah, so, yeah, so reasonable use exemptions, and we've done a handful of them. Um, how they generally work, it becomes almost a negotiation by the science and the, and the biologists. So if my property is fully encumbered by uh, by a critical area and I'm entitled to do use of my property, the city doesn't get to say, well, you only can build a thousand square feet, right? Like, that's what we're going to tell you. That's all you get. What happens generally is that the biologists, the initial biologist of the property owner will submit what they think is reasonable, a reasonable use, right? And there's a bunch of criteria you have to show and need, and that, that's outlined in our code. This is a state process as well because it's tied to the takings provision. Um, and so they have to meet that criteria. That comes back to the city and our biologists will take a look at that. And then you're really looking at how are they mitigating it? Are they able to meet their mitigation with that size? Like, what are they doing um, on site to still provide ecological function, but retain their ability to use their property? There isn't like a cut and dry scenario. I've done a lot of these in my career and I've had some where the house literally was like floating because, because it was completely surrounded by a wetland, right? It was built on pilates. Okay? We have a couple that are along Seuss Creek where they came in and we went back and forth a couple of times and then we landed on what, you know, it was a negotiated um, outcome. But they have to be able to show, they don't just going to come in and decide, right? They have to show that they're meeting all those criteria. And that could be different for different people based on the circumstances of their property.
Right, can I ask?
Yeah.
That was the other question is a lot of times, like if somebody's owned their property for 40 years and they've lived on it and now they want to do something different, like that's a whole nother, is that, is that taken into account, like in the exception?
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, it is their quantitative way to say that so that we're not like giving an essence of unfairness if we let this person do it because while we know them and they're a good community person, been here a while, well, then not over here. I mean, you know what I'm saying?
I do, I do, and that's, and that's, yeah.
Take that out.
Um, that, that's part of the job. That's part of my role is to take that out. What, you know, firm believer of what you do, one, you do for all, and I have to ask myself, would I make that same decision in the same situation over and over again, right? Um, and that's why I say they kind of become a negotiated professional level um, outcome because they still have to meet mitigation. They're still creating an impact, right? So there is a balance, there's a rate of investment that that property owner puts into their land to be able to get what they want out of it. And then we also have to be able to stand in front of ecology and say, yeah, they did it right and they went through the process. And you know, my decision on that's very unbiased, right? Does that help?
Yeah, thank you.
Christina.
I have a. Oh, I didn't know. I have a similar, if not the same question. I just don't feel like we thought I got the answer that I needed. That is a good example. That was based on the, or built on the premise of, let's just say 115, right? Um, that's a lot of houses. If we come in, change the buffer, 125. That changes a lot for a lot of homes. Now, does some Mr. Joe wants to put a deck on his house that he does not have, but so does his neighbor and then his neighbor and then his neighbor and then his neighbor. Is that going to be all of these reasonable use exemptions or, because that's a lot.
Yeah.
To, 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 that's a lot to fight off.
Um, for the existing neighborhoods, no, we have actually carved out some, some um, some code to help address that and I'll get to that shortly. So hopefully, when I get to that slide, if I don't answer the question, let me know. Okay?
Sounds good.
Because this is where we are today. I will tell you the lessons learned of our planning team is this is what we're up against. People in existing neighborhoods say, I want to rebuild my deck. I want to put in a gazebo. I want to tear down my deck and put up a nicer deck. Um, same footprint otherwise, but now this buffer technically goes out to the middle of their street, right? And so we try to incorporate a methodology around how to address that and I'll talk about that in a future slide. Thank you.
Can we give a link to this or whatever later?
Yeah.
Play with, one of the things I'm, sorry. Yeah. Well, one of the things I'm struggling with is trying to figure out. I see those numbers changing or whatever, but where that is actually in the city and how much, you know, the number, you know, 68 acres or whatever, I, I'm going to have to dig into a little bit more to see. If we make this change, where is it specifically? How many acres are we talking about in specific areas and what that looks like before I feel totally comfortable with making a decision one way or the other, but I appreciate this tool. Um, and then one of the other thing that just make a comment that you often get caught in this. The economy is saying we got to balance between development and preserving. It's more like, here's what the environment is telling us we need to do to, to sustain those things, attractive in the first place. How do we fit our development within those constraints? And it often also is what we're doing for the environment. Anything we impact on the streams, it's going to impact people downstream. So things we start, this isn't just about protect environment, it's protecting people downstream from these areas. So just want to make sure we keep that in mind that just because someone wants to build a new deck, oh, but I've let them build their deck. Well, maybe protecting someone's property downstream as well. So that's something that needs to go with that calculation as well.
And I would just add that's balanced with property rights on top of that.
Yep.
Right? Um, I see Nell has her hand raised. Can?
Yeah, um, I just wanted to, to jump in with just a brief clarifying statement. I know um, on an earlier slide, I, I felt um, I just feel like I need to clarify. So as we look at site potential tree height, as Selena mentioned, that value changes across the landscape in the city. So you can have one property with 100 or 105 foot with red alder being the dominant tree. And then you could have, you know, a neighboring property with 187 foot site potential tree height recommendation based on a Doug fir and a specific soil type. So um, the average across the city for site potential tree height is 180 feet. Um, and that is, that was part of what we looked at and evaluated um, with the staff as we looked at the data in G I S um, to determine what increases um, the city felt that they could bear um, to increase protections. Um, in addition to the other best viable science based provisions that are included, like the vegetation standards. Um, and yeah, and I guess in the current model, sorry, one other thing I want to throw in there is site potential tree height, just um, for basic understanding. It, the Department of Fish and Wildlife is, under that approach is recommending that all streams just be viewed based against their maximum ecological function. So no classification system would be involved. Um, and the city under this proposed model has chose to retain the, the well-known and understood stream typing along paired with standard buffer widths. That's all. I just wanted to throw that in.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you. Now, I'm going to jump back into the slide deck unless there's any final questions on the the dashboard. Nope, that's not what I want to share.
One thing about planning mission, we did have a difficult discussion going and trying to identify for the buffering versus the, the site of tree height, because it really was kind of foreign to how we were wanting to convey it to the, to the uh, the city and the, the participants that are going to be doing the coding and everything as well as the developers. And I think we've received also um, a, a, an agreement from uh, the uh, real estate agency as well. They came to us and Sam Pasek gave us a, a approval of going with the buffers rather than going with the, the newer methodology.
By that being riparian.
Yes, okay, exactly.
Okay, no, it's a little term for me. I just wanted to throw it out there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Been to the site potential tree height till we found out that the average buffer would have been 180 feet. That's max pain on the takings clause for the, the reasonable use exemptions. And it would have been max pain for the developers, for all the biologists they would have to hire every single time they want to do so. But we really went into this with a, a notion of understanding how this, of these levers would impact the Growth Management Act targets. So I was all for, let's do a buffer of 10,000 if we still have all the developable land that the GMA is requiring us. Uh, because I, I think a lot of these streams have already been overdeveloped over the years and whatever, that none of them have their original, you know, riparian function that they did 300 years ago, right? Um, so, so we wanted to see where that max pain point was on, on both sides. Will it be max pain for developers versus the city planning department for the amount of special exceptions? Stuff they'd have to do would be most costly. So we could start walking it back to like a reasonable number. That, that 125 really was that sweet spot where you get enhanced protection with hardly any trade off for uh, the developer's cost or the, the planning. So that, that's how we came to one. Did you go over the uh, the buffer?
So it's less than the, whatever we'll call it, tree height, but going to be extended more than what it currently.
Yeah, so we're, yeah, we're increasing it. Um, and, and I think that's a great segue into the considerations. These are things that the planning commission talked about. We talked about city staff capacity, um, equity and transparency. There was a lot of concern about just individual homeowners. I think Commissioner Bossom, that was something that he really brought up a lot was, you know, it's one thing for the development community to navigate this on vacant land, but you know, I'm a property owner and I can't do anything with my property anymore, right? Like that, that, that was something that he, he really brought to the conversation. Um, time to permit, that was also the other thing. Um, I think this is the hard part, not to go too far off of here, is that, you know, in the, in the planning world, we're seeing a bigger push to fast track permits, right, for the housing crisis, right? How do we eliminate arduous steps? How do we make this more predictable? How do we get folks in and out, whether that's they want to build an ADU? They want to build a development, they want to just put a home on a piece of property they own. Um, this, this time to permit, telling everyone each time they need to go get a biologist and then I can't help you until is a really hard thing from a customer service perspective. Um, the cost of property owner, I think that's tied to that equity piece, right? If you just are like, hey, I want to do something, I want to put an ADU on my property. I mean, I've got a critical area now, it's going to cost me more, right? Um, ecological alignment, as, as Nell had said very eloquently, these are just two different options that we have. Um, and then alignment. So most of what we're seeing with our fellow jurisdictions is the tiered, the RMZ. Um, the folks that are even looking at the SPTH tend to be the larger jur, the jurisdictions with less development requirements. So they've got larger swaths of land, right? Than their, that are like farmland or agricultural land or otherwise. Um, but anyone that's really within the King County 38 cities, most of us are looking at the RMZ process.
How would this change impact? As we went back to give our numbers of what we thought we could put on, you know, housing units and so forth. That was driven by us. You know, I mean, they weren't saying you have to do this, right? Right? We're calculating, we, we asked for it. But we did that based on what our developable, developable land was. Would this impact the next go around? Because we've already submitted our numbers, right? When we go and revisit that in the next five years, will this 115 to 125 period would reduce the buildable land that we have and at some point we're going to max out and that would be the end of that, right? Unless.
And I think the two commissioners really spoke to this, that felt like the sweet spot, the 125. Adding 10 more feet to a buffer didn't feel real arduous because we already had 115 calculated in our growth, in our growth targets. The other thing that we did is, so you had a buffer requirement um, of 115, then you had this what was called building setback of about 15 feet or more. And we actually just got rid of that requirement. We go down to the zoning setback. So we put more, more buffer in the 125 um, and took less out of just the building setback. So at the end of the day, we're going from like 130 feet before you could see a structure to I think it's 132 feet, 35 feet before you can see a structure.
So it's kind of a push.
It's a push.
Well, one of the issues we had with the 115, I, I don't know if you've gone over the buffer averaging or not.
Oh, huh, no.
But, but one of the more interesting concepts is like Selena was saying, streams don't care where your property line is. So, so there's all, all these jagged corners and things on a property. So i- if you're a developer looking to develop your property, it, it doesn't always line up the way you need it to. And if we had a hard and fast 115 that says you're not allowed to approach 115, you'd have a really weird uh, developable slot, uh, which would really limit you. So you can do, the buffer averaging, the way I understand it is it essentially allows you to do some horse trading within your own property that says we will encroach a little bit closer to the critical area in this portion, but then we'll give you more buffer in a different portion that might be better suited for it. And so
To balance it out.
Yeah, to balance it out. And I think there's maximums and minimums to like 70% to 130 or something like that in it. So the, the goal is that you have to maintain 115 average across your property if you're trading 10 feet here and there. But, but if you look at that 70% mark of the 115 set, that's, that's really kind of small. So the, the Department of Fish and Wildlife is recommending 100 feet minimum to maintain riparian. And with that buffer averaging, there are a lot of cases where you'd be at that 70%, which is much, much less than that 30. And so we wanted to get closer to that, like 100 average with buffer averaging the minimum.
That was a great explanation of this slide too. Yeah.
And it's only like two acres, I think, impacted for developable.
Yeah.
Like two-ish acres to go from the 115. So very, very small.
So ultimately for the stream buffers, I think, you know, Kenner summarized this great. Um, the planning commission, we spent all summer, like spring to summer on this very topic. We ultimately, their recommendation is to use the RMZ for consistency. Um, we did get feedback from various agencies as well that was in the packet. Um, and then they recommend adopting the 125 feet. Um, that's pretty in line with our peer cities. Um, And, and Facet, as our, our, um, subject matter expert, you know, believes that also balances and is aligned with that best available science. And then obviously we have those policy trade-offs as a result of that. So I'm going to pause there. I'm going to try to go through these next slides pretty quick. I had my watch died. What do we have for time? You doing okay? Yeah, I'm going to go super fast. Any final questions on how we landed on one twenty-five and the RMZ? Okay. So we just spent a lot of time on this. I won't spend any more time on this buffer, but just bringing your attention to that chart there. So where we are today and where we plan to go in the future. The NP and the NS streams, we have to bring those to a hundred. As Kenner also had mentioned, that WDF says a hundred. That's an easy, an easy one for us. And we're going from one fifteen to one twenty-five. And then our reasons there are listed. The next update, which I think gets to, um, the, the exemptions and modifications required. So we created some exemptions for small yard work, fence repair, patio deck. So if you're going to come in and you're now a pro, you're in existing plat, right? You're a platted property that, um, that exists. And you want to come in and you say, I want to repair, I want to build a new deck, right? So we have a lot of these old decks. Most people want to go to that composite or the
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And we, we would say, well, you're in the critical area. And then they say, well, my entire house is in a critical area. And we said, well, you gotta go do a wetland study. And then you gotta come back and you gotta do mitigation. And it just, it, it, we couldn't straight face. I mean, Regan got brought in on one of these. I was like, I straight face, this is, this is silly, right? And we didn't have a methodology in the code to address this. So we made sure we did that this time around. So we went in and we made some very clear exemptions for like being able to do some yard work, right? You can plant some trees and enjoy your backyard. You can do some repair. You can do your patios, your decks, as long as they're less than two hundred square feet. And then we did, uh, we modified the C A O review. So instead of you now coming in for a full wetland study, you can come in for what's called a reconnaissance, a critical area reconnaissance, which is basically like a memo that talks about, um, what it is that you want to do and then what you're going to do on your property, if you want to exceed that two hundred square feet. It's up to five hundred square feet. To, um, do what you want. So you could come in and say, well, we're going to plant some trees and I'm going to build a deck and I'm going to plant a couple of trees. And, and we all move on. It's a, it's a lesser, um, it's a lesser process for them. So, but why this matters is that the home, that the homeowners benefit from a more simplified process. Right? That's what we kept running into was this very arduous process. It's also a lower cost to them to go in and just have it either if they get a biologist or someone qualified to help them go through that. And instead of undergoing this whole critical area review, they can now just do this reconnaissance level review. And the goal here was, you know, and the commission talked a lot about this too, like most people will take care of their yards and they will plant in their backyards and they will have great enjoyment of their yards, which today is not buffer at all, right? We have to remember their, their property line is probably where the old critical area buffer was, right? Going back to that original slide. Because the codes have changed year over year, that, that line has been extended. So technically that stewardship of allowing some enjoyment of your yard could actually create some benefit for them. So does that get to your question earlier that we carved out some exemptions for folks? So those that are fully encumbered now can come in and do, um, up to two hundred square feet without a permit. Like you can build your deck, you can build your little patio. The reason we did two hundred square feet, because that's also the exemption in the building code. Um, so you can put up like your little tool shed, things like that. Anything that was exempt in the building code is exempt here. And then if you want to go above that, let's say you want to come in and build an ADU or you want to build a larger patio or poorer concrete patio, then you're coming in for that modified rigging. We still want to take a look at what you're doing. There's probably a couple of things you might need to do, but we want to make it easier for you.
And those terms are defined, like small yard work fits or
Yep, that's all defined in there. Where before, I think we had like three or four exemptions, there was like nothing you could do. We really expanded that. And I think that just goes along with just a growing city, right? Our, 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 our issues in twenty twelve are very different than our issues in twenty twenty-five. Um, the other thing we did is just some minor updates to the hazard area. Um, just again, clearer standards. We did start to also introduce the climate's resiliency thinking in with, really without this, within this whole entire code. So thinking more about what we learned during our comprehensive plan around heavy rain, flooding, earthquake events, making sure that we had those clear, um, clearly defined. And all of these areas are mapped. So all of this information where these existing Covington are in fact mapped. So I put a couple of maps there for you. Um, the next one is enforcement. We had almost no enforcement standards. So if Brian, our code compliance went out to a site and they were in a critical area, we were really just like slogging along, hey, you need to come in and do a welling report. Hey, we need you to do this. There was nothing that tied that to push them towards Brian actually taking code compliance action under title one. So we, we made sure that that was more clear. We talked about stop work processes. We talk about penalties. We talk about timeline for violations, making sure that folks are staying on top of it. And then also adding the monitor and maintenance until recovery is, um, successful. We don't get a ton of these, but when we do, they're big. Right? Oftentimes someone's like digging in their backyard and you know.
That include taking down trees, uh, without notification?
That would be in the tree. Yeah. And also if it's in the, the trees in the critical area, then yes, it would be under the code as well. Yeah. Yeah. And then these are the flexibility tools. We talked a little bit about that. So we got better at our buffer averaging, which, um, which Kenner talked about. So that again, we're not losing the square footage of the buffer on site, but folks can kind of push and pull those lines a little bit. Um, this is really important because development and infill, even if it's just someone building an ADU, you often have to match the elevation of a critical area to the elevation of a roadway, to the elevation of utilities. And so being able to move that buffer around is helpful. Um, and then also if they can create again, that system where they're putting maybe an area of their stormwater adjacent to it and their tree track adjacent to it, then it creates a better complex. So buffer averaging, um, really important. We did remove buffer reduction. So you used to be able to come in and get a buffer reduction down to like sixty feet. And we got rid of that. So a hundred and twenty-five is the number. You can move that line around, but you can no longer go down to less than that, um, that buffer requirement. We did increase vegetation standards. So we got more clear, more dense vegetation, looking at the criteria around that. And if you don't want to meet it, then you can exceed, then you can extend your buffer thirty-three percent. Right? So the developer has the, the industry has an option. We consolidated all the trail standards. Those were scattered everywhere. We also talked about the building setbacks. We got very clear that they were the zoning setbacks. And then the enforcement, which we just talked about. There's a handful of associated code amendments. The big one is that the bulk of the critical area pages of that, those fifteen pages that we took out were related to agriculture. Okay? We have some farm management plans. Some folks still have horses in Covington. We've done farm management plans. But we, we did a cross-reference. We took those out of the critical area code. We put them in the animal farm code. And then we cross-referenced. So it's, it's like for like, we just took it out and placed it somewhere else. We don't have enough of those that it needed to take up seven or eight pages for the critical areas ordinance. And then the one thing that we has been consistent through the shoreline through this update is just getting our qualified biologist definition very clear. Cause the, the state's very clear that you have to have a qualified biologist do this work. So I went through that last part fast. We are at input and questions time. If there's anything more.
Anybody else have any questions or anything?
Get a copy of.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, yeah. I'll give it to Krista.
All right. Well, I would say I really appreciate all the hard work. There's been a lot of thoughtful consideration. I came in with one thought. More thoughts.
Just good.
Open. So really appreciate it. Great work.
So Mayor, I have one question for the, for the council and is that you know, we were hopeful this would fill the space of what you needed to be able to make a decision in December. Is there a desire or need to bring this back in between for further discussion?
I don't think so. Yeah, the only thing I would say is if they have some additional input, and I would like to talk about that side of that the report, you know, making it what I, I don't totally understand that report, making it tighter on the deadline or how good it, how long it's good or extending your time they need to report to say, it's no longer functioning the way we thought it was. We need to adjust. So I'll put my thoughts together, but if there's some way to think about that.
Or even if there was a major event that was a trigger, like if everything's status quo, it wouldn't matter, but if some major event happened, I don't know.
Can I, the only, the only, I, I don't want to stop you from thinking about it, but I just want to maybe pause and take a step back further upstream on that topic. Is that even if the, I didn't even think about that. Even if you make the report have to be submitted again, the regulations aren't different. Right?
Right.
So if we change the regulations within that five years, then the report has to match those regulations. So as long as these regulations are in place, the way that it's written is that that report can still remain valid. If we update this in twenty twenty-five and then we update it again in twenty twenty-seven, any reports in twenty twenty-five are no longer valid because they'd have to meet the new twenty twenty-seven requirement.
But I, I saw when they pulled a permit, the report at the time is
Well, there's two. There's, yeah, there's the report that gets you in the door, right? So you are vested to those criteria. Then there's the report around your mitigation and monitoring.
Yeah, yeah.
And that report would have to respond if necessary to any changing conditions.
And that goes to your point, Beth, that there was some major thing that changed conditions. Then that would be something that would trigger a change.
Would change, yeah. I mean, I get, I get it. We didn't have anything before, like this is, you know, we didn't have a number before.
Yeah.
So.
So is council good with having this just come back in December? The final vote? And, um, I echo Sean's comments. Planning Commission did an outstanding job, a lot of hard work on this. So thank you for throwing this forward. All right. Uh, this joint session is, um, over and adjourned and we will start council at seven PM. Thank you.